In, ready to begin our recess meeting July the nineteenth, I would call this meeting to order. We will first stand for the pledge of allegiance. We'll follow that with an invocation by Alderman Carver and then among the citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Carver, you would please, sir?
Yes ma'am, let's pray. Father, we just thank you, I thank you, Lord, for this weather and this rain that we had today, Lord. Thank you for letting us gather here tonight, be with the mayor and the board of Alderman and each and every one of our city workers and city employees, Lord. And thank you for this town that we live in, Lord. Pray for safety this summer and into the school of year, Lord. Pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here and we will, Alderman, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins is going to be coming in, so he'll be slipping in a little bit here as soon as he gets in, back into town. But we will proceed with our agenda. First item we have is the approval of the official agenda with consented items. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Alderman Carver, any changes?
No ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sisdrunk?
No ma'am.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, ma'am.
All right. Could I get a motion to approve with the, the official agenda with the consented items?
So moved.
I have a motion for Alderman Rupp. Second, Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you. I'll read the consented items. First, we have consideration of the minutes of the June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of minutes of the July one, twenty-twenty-two work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. We have consideration of a resolution establishing the revised polling places for the city of Starkville municipal elections. Under department business, airport, we have request approval for five airport board members, airport operations manager Rusty Bushelon, and airport director Rodney Lincoln to attend the Mississippi Airport Association MAA conference September seventh through the ninth, twenty-twenty-two at the mill in Starkville, Mississippi with advanced registration payment. Under community development planning, we have consideration of reappointing Debbie Nettles, the sole applicant of the historic preservation commission. Under engineering, we have consideration of acceptance of the low quote of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Hollywood Boulevard roundabout improvements project from H&amp;H Construction and excavating and authorizing the mayor to execute a construction contract. Number two, consideration of acceptance of the low quote of forty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ten cents from groundstone construction for the reworked sidewalk project and authorizing the mayor to execute a construction contract relating to same. This work falls under the previously approved sidewalk budget in the city's capital improvement plan. Under finance administration, we have consideration of the June twenty-twenty-two financials. Under human resources, we have request authorization to hire McKenzie Rogers as a reserve police officer in the Starkville Police Department. Two, request authorization to hire Kyle Gant as an aircraft lineman, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. Three, request authorization to hire Stephen Cappleman as a civil engineer two in the engineering department. Four, is request authorization to hire Aleah Bradford and Morgan Ingram as radio operators, dispatchers in the Starkville Police Department. Five, request authorization to hire Kayden Montgomery as assistant administrator one in the information technology department. Six, request authorization to hire Chris Williams as an associate engineer, projects manager in the engineering department. Under parks, we have request authorization to execute change order number three from Sports Contractors Unlimited for batting cage truck in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents. And departments also, we have item two, which is request authorization to execute the lowest quote from Paul Davis for the Moncrief pool bathroom repair in the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and ninety-three cents. Under police, request approval to allow Corporal Robert Agares the opportunity to become a certified test copter at an upcoming National Institute of Standards and Technology, NIST, for SUAS, unmanned aircraft system drone course hosted at the Maryland State Police August eighth through the twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, with NIST covering the cost for the course and travel expenses. Under utilities, we have request approval to accept the lowest bids received for July one, twenty-twenty-two through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two source of supply listing for Starkville Utilities, Electric Division and Water Division. And under utilities, also number two, request authorization for Starkville Utilities to initiate passport or number ten with Garber LLC for the construction, administration, and observation services related to the Green Oaks, South Side, and Rolling Hills sewer rehabilitation project in the amount of eighty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Under mayor's comments, we are going to have a special recognition tonight, and I'm going to let the chief take care of this, but I do want to say personally that this recognition of our SPD officer, Lane McTaggart, is what we're going to be seeing. We're going to see a little clip of the action that occurred, and his life-saving action was exactly that. So, Chief, I will let you take it from here.
Thank you, ma'am, Vice Mayor, Board of Alderman. You know, it's a real pleasure when you, first of all, when you're able to find personnel that can perform up under pressure, and more so than a three-point shot at field goal or home run. Our personnel do it up under the greatest of circumstances. So, we have a short video here to show how important it is to get the right personnel in the right training and how it matches together to save a life. IT, if you would, can you pull up the video, please? And this is from, a shortened-down version from July fourth of Officer McTaggart responding So, it's with great honor that I present this life-saving ribbon to Officer Lane McTaggart, and I'll read it out. For your actions that saved a human life on July fourth, twenty-twenty-two, Officer McTaggart administered a life-saving CPR to a drowning victim. Your heroic actions reflected in highest standard of conduct for law enforcement and bring great credit to yourself and to the Starkville Police Department.
Thank you so much for what you do. I appreciate you coming over. Glad to shake your hand. All right. Well, I can't follow that with anything, so I'm not going to make any comments. Any, any board members have comments? Alderman?
I've got, I've got a few bear with me. First of all, I know to the basketball game between the fire department and the police department was, what I saw was a good turnout and a good time, and the police department won this year. Is that correct?
I think the fire department might disagree with that.
Enjoy seeing the pictures on Facebook. Secondly, testament to this board and mayor and things is you're going to start seeing, have seen some road pavings, and it's what a pleasure it is to ride on some of these festive paved roads that we've been able to do for the city. And then third, I thought, well, just to recognize it, but inside, you'll see tonight, under human resources last, is Mr. Fisher Williams is going to be hired, so he'll work for Cody. And Cody is, is the engineer, and this is going to be a good, more I think about, it's going to be a good thing for the city and take the load and just delegate some authority out without the department. So, looking forward to that department the next few years. And then last, I'm going to honor, or just recognize, I saw Ms. Coach, Barbara Coach is doing a hometown hero, and she recognizes that Chris Black. I thought that was really cool. I just saw that today on Facebook for the first time. I didn't know she was doing that, but I thought that was very good for the modern woodmen and what they're doing for their, for the community here. I know it's a very service-driven organization and company, but that was pretty cool to see a city employee recognize for that. How you?
Okay, thank you.
Echo Alderman Carver's eloquent summary of good stuff, Lord.
Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am.
Alderman Sisdrunk?
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
I got one thing, ma'am. Just want to thank you. My son passed some years ago in Clark Grove. They thought enough to name a street after him. And so, so they finally complete with the project. And so, Saturday at two o'clock, if you're board, department, if you don't have anything to do, we go premonerate him or just do some moments of him Saturday at two o'clock at Clark Grove. They got a clubhouse, but it could be there. Once you turn down, Sahave, my son named it Sahave, Sahave, and the street is Sahave Avenue. And thanks to Scott Farmer and, and Brittany and all those at Clark Grove Development that did a lot of work to help get this done. Plus, couldn't have done it with nothing without this board. And I thank y'all so much. So, it'll be at two o'clock Saturday, Clark Grove. Once you come down Sahave Avenue, just come all the way to the end, and then you'll be at the clubhouse. The mayor will be there, Vice Perkins will be there, because they own program. Chief Yarba own program. And, and I just thank y'all so much. I called Brittany. He won't be in there. Scott will be out of town. So, thank y'all so much, board. And I appreciate y'all's support.
Glad to work that. All right. Next item is citizen comments. Anyone wishing to make any comments for the board? You have three minutes to do that. Ms. Vaughn will be timing us, so you can talk about any subject you wish.
Good evening, board. My name is Adam Turnwater. Seven. I would like to, to the mayor, to the podium chief, to the fire chief. Oh, Lan, we have a few things that is on the horizon, and we're going to have to be very alert, as Alderman Vaughn say, if you see something, say something. Seems like that we have a lot of, yes, killing, or people, or they won't join the army, but they just won't walk around and kill people. If we, Lan, if we could, the chief or the mayor can, or let people know that you cannot ditch off our army in the city, or that'll help. Our, China Park, Lan, they had, has a garbage buildup in Lan. Some of the residents are complaining about the garbage buildup. The Brooklyn Garden facing our Cyclone fence, is a lot of garbage buildup, and the children are complaining about it. A primary school soon be starting back. You know, we are in police department, snipers, and everyone, we're going to have to be on alert, because we don't know what going to happen nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close it for you.
Ma'am, I, I left Ever there. I didn't mean to, but when you get to give an annual, I couldn't have done anything without Ever, because him and I visit Clark Grove so much, and we saw so many wrong, and we always came back to you with it. But Ever, you in the engineering department, I thank you so much, and I hope you be available Saturday. I really do.
Thank you. All right. Close, citizen's comments, and we have two public hearings this evening. This one, the first one is the second public hearing, consideration of the redistricting plan resulting from the twenty-twenty census and the annexation of twenty-twenty-two. The map is in the back. The map is also going to be on the screen here in just a second, I'm guessing, that was part of our e-package. And so, we have, let's see, Mr. Sanford is here from GT PDD, and he's here to answer any questions if the board has any at this time. If not, I'll go ahead and open it as a public hearing. Any questions from the board before I do that? I'll open it as a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak about it? We had it as a public hearing at the last board meeting. We now have it at this board meeting, and then after that, there will be an opportunity for consideration of this item. So, anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak either for or against? Either for or against? Seeing no one, I'll close it. Okay. No, I'll close it as a public hearing. And Toby, would you mind coming up and give us a little, a little recap on what we're looking at? You can use the screen if you want to.
Can I recap on the changes?
Yes, just the changes. Okay, just the changes.
Okay, hear me. Hit the lights just a little bit. There were some major changes in the redistricting. We tried to do what's called a change plan, and that works. If you add some more population in your city than a pound or four previously, then you're talking about making changes. So, I forget technically how many changes we had. Probably close to twenty. But this area right here, and what's that? That's Channel Four?
Yes, sir.
It's moving out of seven and into six. This area on the west side of Starkville, it is west of twenty-five, and it used to be in one, the last redistricting. We're moving it back into one. Seven is going to come down in this area and fill in this part that used to be two. And the reason being is the annexation happened over there. You're kind of shifting this way, because everybody in the annexation area had to be added to the city. So, as we added them, things start to shift that way. Seven had to pick up some population. It's got seven's population as it needed to be. Three picked up a little bit right here. That is, what's the name of the subdivision?
Four and three? Oh, that's Timbercoast.
Timbercoast. And it used to be in three, ten years ago, and it is now moving back into three. Two is growing up from the city to increase its population to make up for losing a little bit over here. The names of the streets.
Pleasant Acres.
Yeah, Pleasant Acres is right here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Forty-two. This is going from seven to two, and that just helps two move up this way, and that goes up into the city. There's an area that cleans some lines right here. This is a better-looking area than it was. We're moving that out of five and into four, so that the highway is now the boundary line of one eighty-two. Three is going to move up and follow Highway twelve out through the city. And we are cleaning these boundaries up here between five and six. All of this right here, this little area, and help me is at Bid Lake and
It's at Evergreen.
and Evergreen, and it is moving out of six and into five. And then this subdivision right here is moving out of six and into five. And the annex area will be, in the annex area, is what you did not have at the board to begin with. South of eighty-two is moving into five. North of eighty-two is moving into six. Thank you so much.
Any questions from the board on that?
I got one. What is that, seventy-two? Seventy-two? What area is that?
That was where the high school was sitting.
Right, that's where the trailer park.
And that trailer park used to be there, but now I think there's zero population in this area right here. And that was to get to where you could cross over and up.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Light?
Toby, I know you did a deep dive on the numbers for the board during the work session, and I'm certainly not asking you to get into the weeds like you did on Friday, but can you just touch briefly on how you did two things? Number one, you preserved the one-person, one-vote principle.
We did.
And number two, how the new plan avoids any retrogression of minority voting strategy.
It increased our two minority districts to seventy and seventy-five. I would have to see the
The numbers are on there if anyone scrolled.
The table. The first page is the
Go up, go up.
There you go. To make sure that I can see now. Minority six is going to seventy-five point three, and seven is going to seventy point eight, which both of them increased. And that benchmark, they were just above the lowest as far as median population. And that, that was, I was very pleased to be able to add enough population to get the deviation down and increase the minority percentage.
Thank you. Anything else?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Well, I need a motion if we're going to adopt this redistricting plan.
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries. I'll give you a minute. Thank you. Next, we have public hearing, consideration of
We're done with it.
We are, we are done. You may be excused.
I will give it to y'all. We do need to create your written descriptions. There were some major changes, and that will take a few days. I'm not sure how long, but we will need to get that done. And once that's done, we post the board order, once it's legal, once you've adopted your minutes in the paper for three consecutive weeks. Now, it doesn't have to be every day, but if you run it on a Monday, it needs to be Monday, a Monday, and a Monday, and we're done.
Okay. Thank you so much. Before you go to Alderman Sisdrunk?
This county is also going through redistricting or has gone through
It's already done.
And the circuit clerk will be mailing out new voter registration cards.
That is correct, for everyone that changed.
Everyone who changed.
That's right. And that will also have to be done, but that's kind of on the back end. We're not under any pressure to get it. And she couldn't change anything right now, even if she wanted to, due to the election coming up another, which has no effect with these lines.
So, when people get new voter registration cards, that's what it's about?
Absolutely.
Alderman Rupp?
Ma'am, I'm often accused of being left in the dark, but could we get the lights?
I'm so sorry.
And good job. Thank you to PDD for an excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you all. You know where I am if you need me.
Remind me, and I'll show you where those lights are.
Okay.
All right. Next, we have public hearing, consideration of RZ rezoning twenty-two dash zero one. Mr. Havlon?
Yes. RZ twenty-two dash zero one. This is a request by Albert Jackson Day Jr. to rezone some property recently purchased from the city by Mr. Day. The property is currently zoned special institutional, and the proposal is to take it to commercial. The special institutional zoning designation is reserved for city of Starkville-owned, managed, or partially-owned property. The properties to the north and the south of the track are currently zoned commercial. With the change in ownership, the property goes from a municipal use to a private use, and therefore, there's a need for the zoning designation to change. And then also, with the near completion of the Cornerstone Park to the west, there's a change in condition of neighborhood and a need for additional commercial property to support Cornerstone Park. There is also, there is also the possibility of an error being created by not rezoning it now that the use has changed, because it's left in municipal use, and it's in private ownership and no longer owned by the city of Starkville. So, at the planning zoning meeting on July twelfth, the planning zoning commission met, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the change based on change in condition and error. This was also noticed in the Starkville Daily News on June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, and a sign placed on the property, and one notification was mailed out to property owners within a hundred and sixty feet, which happened to be the Applebee. And if the, as of this date, the planning office, no response to that notification. So, if there are any questions, this is pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Havlon before I open it as a public hearing? All right. Seeing none, let me open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against this item, now would be the time to do so. Either for or against. All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. If there are no further questions, if you have one, I need a motion.
Do approval.
A motion from Alderman Brooks. Thank you. And second?
Second.
Second, Alderman, Alderman Carver. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Proposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And Vice Mayor, welcome, welcome aboard.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Glad to be here. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is consideration calling for public hearings on the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget and tax milling for the city of Starkville. I know that Alderman Sisdrunk has been working diligently with staff, which is Mr. Corbin and his partner, as well as with department heads and various sundry folks, to try to come up with a budget that is something for us to consider. One of the things I would like us to do, one of my goals, is for us to have this budget adopted by the second meeting in August, which we can be on track to do, but we're going to need to obviously move forward in some kind of way. So, I think perhaps some opportunity for some discussion here. This will be called for a public hearing. We will need to put that in the paper. And I think what Alderman Sisdrunk has provided, has given at the table to everyone, is the sample of draft that would have a one mil proposed increase. And Alderman Sisdrunk, I'll let you talk about what you, what you've done and how you've put this together. Obviously, we called for a one mil increase. We don't have to adopt a one mil increase if we advertise for it. But if we don't do it, then we certainly can't have one. We don't have any flexibility whatsoever. So, Alderman Sisdrunk, would you like to provide a little background?
Sure. We, we do this every year, and I've had great help from the, the city clerk's office, both Lisa Harden and Webb Corbin. Nav Ashford was tremendous help, and Greg Hunley, in trying to pull together information about pay. The budget each year is a question of what new revenues do we have? What new expenses do we have? How, how, how we want to blend those. This year, we're fortunate to have a lot of additional revenue. Unfortunately, we also find ourselves in the position of potentially needing to come up with a lot of additional revenue to cover expenses related to the Stennis Institute salary survey that was done. The, although we did a rate increase last year, that took us to ninety-five percent of the median for the, the cities that we were compared to. This year, the, the impetus for this really came from the vacancies that we're seeing in the police department and the fire department, and the difficulty in recruiting and retaining employees, particularly in those departments, but, but across the board in all, in all departments. So, Nav and Greg Hunley and the Stennis Institute put together a proposal that would bring our groups to a hundred percent of the median, of the median, for a sample that is, my statistics class was kicking in there, of a group of cities that we are comparable to, that we we are comparable to, that we hire from, that we lose employees to. Um, so that's the biggest number, um, increase in, in expenses in the budget. Otherwise, the department heads are, y'all, they really do an excellent job of not overreaching in asking for things, um, and so I am loathe to refuse them if we can at all, uh, give them the things that they need, the, the, um, additional monies, a little for training, um, the street department needs some equipment that will allow them to operate more efficiently, all that sort of thing. But hands down, the big ticket item is salaries and what we do with salaries. The proposal, uh, for the general fund, not utilities, not the, the sanitation, that sort of thing, is, is about a one-point-one million dollar increase in salaries and benefits across, um, across all the general fund departments. We, we're fortunate in that we have additional revenues coming onboard, uh, with annexation, and with this being a revaluation year for properties, so we, we have more property taxes than we would typically have. We also, um, anticipate our sales taxes continue to grow. We have, um, Cornerstone coming online next year, which we think will drive some, some additional sales tax revenue. The, um, Triangle Crossing, is its real name, the Triangle Crossing Development should be open, which should generate some, some new sales tax. Unfortunately, a lot of that will need to be set aside for, um, debt service for, uh, a TIF going forward. Um, the annexed territory has some commercial, um, establishments that generate sales tax, and then in general, we're hopeful that the economy continues to, um, grow, although in looking at numbers statewide, um, the sales tax numbers are slowing down. They're still growing, but they're slowing down over the last few months. So, so, um, the bulk of our money will always come, almost always come from sales tax and property taxes. We're fortunate that we have some increases there. We do not have enough to cover, um, the, the handful of expenses that departments ask for and the one-point-one million in, um, um, salary increases and some adjustments that are necessary to recognize the fact that particularly, and I'm going to keep talking about police and fire because they're our two largest departments, and, and most of our expenses, salary expenses, are going to run through those two departments, but we needed to recognize that, um, they use more and more overtime, partially because they're understaffed, partially it's just a reflection of the workload that they have. So, um, that combination gets us to a draft budget that is what I've chosen to call a splitting-the-baby budget. It's got a one-mill tax increase in it. It also fully funds all positions but freezes a handful of positions in the police department and in the fire department. Um, anything can be changed, anything can be changed. At this point, they're just numbers on a piece of paper, and I'd, I'd hope that everybody would take a look and, um, and, and open to suggestions for how we might move forward. But the critical point right now is to advertise for the public hearing. Um, it's probably better to over-advertise and say that we're going to plan for a one-mill increase. As the mayor said, that doesn't mean we have to pass a one-mill increase. It just keeps us from coming back two weeks from now and, and having to, to, um, go from no increase to a one-mill increase. So, that's, that's my story. I'm sticking with it, and I hope that, um, y'all can, can help us get to a landing place with this.
Okay. And, and again, thank you, because you have done a huge amount of work on this, crunching numbers one way, another way, another way, and then another way, so it's been just an ongoing project with the city clerk's office and Mr. Ashford helping with the salary. So, for discussion purposes, Alderman Carver, anything you'd like to ask or discuss?
I was just going to ask, when? This has to be approved by when?
It has to be done by September the fifteenth, but I would like us to not be bumping up against a, a absolute last day. I would like us to, to be ready to go to the last meeting in August, which would be really nice, but, you know, we, we will do what we have to do, but September the fifteenth is the absolute.
What, um, on the SMART, did they request twenty-five thousand more?
No, they requested a hundred.
What?
They requested a hundred thousand. We give them fifty, so, you know, they have the same issues that we do in the sense of our, our gas expenses are going up, theirs are too. We have never, you know, funded them to the extent that they serve us, and so we, we were trying to, um, you know, be a little mindful of their concerns as they serve the, the community.
And then, uh, category three forty says bird and park mobile. Is that just collections to date a hundred and sixty-three thousand? Or what is that, sixty-five hundred?
No, I think we're off on one. No, park mobile is, no.
No, it's like eleven thousand.
It goes from budgeted to year-to-date activity, from a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, I, I copied and pasted something, and that should be-
No, it's, you see the eleven thousand eight hundred, just one over?
It's, it's like fifty-five hundred. I was trying to-
Is the year-to-date like eleven thousand?
Like fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it just kind of stood out.
Yep, it would.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, how you?
Okay. Anything else? Alderman Rupp?
Yes, I appreciate all the work, Alderman Sistrum, guys, much respect for you and your, uh, take on the numbers. Uh, I can't support the tax increase, uh, and I think that what we're trying to raise is less than three percent of our budget, so I think we can find that internally. Uh, certainly, uh, agree with paying our folks more, uh, just disagree on how to get there, but I appreciate the work that you put into this.
Alderman Brooks?
I'll second Alderman Rupp on that. I, because I, I've talked to the chair numerous times about this, and she is really a guitar on this, but I, I really think that, you know, I can just keep supporting tax increase to get there. Uh, and I look back at, you know, the overall raises we did last year, uh, which is just a year ago, you know, of course, it includes unified funds of around half million dollars, um, and, and the fact that we, you know, like, like in the board, we also, uh, approved, you know, two mill increase in taxes, so I'm just hoping we can, we can work through this maybe and, and get to, and prepare that more without, without tax increase. I do.
Okay. Alderman Beadie?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Sistrum, this is really good.
Thank you.
I mean, this, this, boiled down and concise to where this, this book, especially we, you know, going through that, that complete comprehension, when there's a lot of stuff, this, this puts it obviously in, in terms of where we can, can understand it. Um, a mill generates three-hundred-and-five thousand of what you estimate.
This, this year.
Um, I think one of the concerns we've had is that we, uh, in our, particularly our low and middle, mid people, that we haven't, have not been as competitive as we need to be with Sistrum, with, with comparative cities of, of our size, which creates a situation where if we don't, if we don't become competitive, we're just going to train people, go some, go somewhere else. And, and our whole, I've, I've heard the mayor talk about this, and others who've talked about this, and, and department heads, about the importance of training and keeping, you know, qualified people. So this, this is a way to do that, and I think that even though, uh, some people would say in the, in the economic times we're in, that, that the one-mill, uh, tax increase is, you know, is, is, you know, anytime you increase taxes, uh, payroll taxes, that's something that, that, uh, you have to do very carefully, but at the same time, uh, we need to do this for our city. Uh, I think this has been very carefully thought out, and, um, and so far, what I see is something I think I can support.
Um, I'm going to, I'll, I'll go down the line. Um, I, I am absolutely, um, a believer that we've got to pay our people as much as we possibly can afford. We cannot chase another city, but we can certainly be competitive. Uh, there are going to be those who cannot pay, or who, who will pay far more than we can, but I do think that those with whom we, uh, have shared some similarities, um, that's what that salary study was about, and I do think it's very important that we pay our people a fair wage and a wage that wants them, allows them to be here where I think a good many of them actually want to be, but find that they need to go elsewhere in order to, to take care of themselves and their family. I think there are a number of things that we do, and while I certainly understand there are ways to squeeze, having been doing this for a number of years with our, our staff and, and then the staff that, um, has been around for a very long time back when I was CAO, I know that our staff is not frivolous in spending our city dollars. I know that they, they understand it like the rest of us do who pay it, because in some cases, they live in town as well, and, and they are no more interested in wasting the city's money than, than we are, or than anyone else is. So, um, I think it's extremely important that we look at how we compensate them, and I think this is our opportunity to do so, and never will we raise taxes just for the tech op, and these are not frivolous expenses, I don't believe, and so I, I am very supportive of doing this, however unpleasant it is to do, but I can also say, and I sent this to the board, so I know that y'all, I hope that y'all received it, um, even with a one-mill increase, we still remain, and this does not say what other people are having to do as well, because there are other cities that find themselves in, in the same sort of circumstances, so, you know, we still find ourselves like with the, with the fourth lowest, or fifth lowest, uh, tax rate, even, even so, and, uh, of a city our size, which I think says a great deal about how, um, frugal we have been and how judicious we have been with our, with our taxpayers' dollars. So I say that to them, so. I'm going to skip you, Alderman Sistrum, since you've had a chance.
I, I do have something I want to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and, uh, input is welcome. This, this is a, a group document, and, and it needs to be something we can all support at the end of the day. Um, I, for those who think that you can squeeze a little bit more out of it, I, I applaud you, and I, I would very much like for you to point to the lines, show me where it hurts, so.
Vice Mayor?
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Carter?
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Captain Wilders, scan the paper.
Alderman Carter?
Sure.
Um, on the last page, nine twelve streets, it goes from a million and a half down to fifty thousand, what's wrong with that?
Give me just a second to refresh my memory.
Start, say it again.
That, that-
On the last page, nine twelve streets, and streets of construction.
That, that streets that, we had this year, um, emergency road and bridge repairs that were roughly a million four fifty, give or take a little bit, and that project is finished and goes away. Our streets are, as you know, we've talked about before, are being funded, um, street repairs and improvements are being funded out of the NEMA, um, use tax funds, which is set up in a separate account, separate from this.
I could ask this sometime, but what about herbicide and mosquito spray? Do we still do both of those?
We, we do the mosquito spraying, uh, on, on call, we do the larvicide, the, the pre-emergent stuff, and then we'll do the mosquito spraying as it's called for, and we do have occasional calls, but I think less so, because people are employing a lot of that, that around-the-house stuff that you get from Lowe's or from Bell's or, or East Mississippi, that seems to be very effective, so we get fewer calls for, for that, but we are doing the pre-emergents.
And we did, we did budget for that.
You did, we used to budget seventy-five hundred or something for-
I think we budgeted a little bit more than that, but, but, um, we do budget for that.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll echo with everybody else, you know, I said thank you, uh, as always, for taking the lead on this, and look forward to discussion about it.
Alderman Beadie, did I see your name again?
Yes, but I might be-
Well, I, I'm not seeing anyone else, so now I'm boiling on it, as you asked for it, basically.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrum, the, uh, MAMA money, anticipated this, in this book, you, what is this, how much you?
We, we, we think that it will be around two-point-two, five million, it could be two-three.
Have we gotten to the fifteenth cap, or whatever?
This, this fiscal year twenty-three will be at the, at the fully implemented amount.
So, and part of that money is based on our percentage of, of the total retail sales of, of all municipalities in the state, and the other is based on population, right?
And then there's a tiny little bit that's a flat amount that everybody gets, yeah, like ten thousand dollars.
Now, we, are we using, we putting that right out on the street, or are we using that as leverage against bond debt? Are we doing both?
We're doing both. We're doing both. We have put it in a separate account, and the plan is to do some pay-as-you-go, um, improvements, and, um, for instance, part of what you'll see this year was, was pay-as-you-go project, um, and then we've authorized the issuance of, um, bonds to, to do a larger project, um, that would be, um, the debt service would come from those funds.
Yeah, we said five million dollar bond.
Even though we, we're, uh, constrained on what we can spend it on, which is water, street, and structure, that's the, that's the biggest thing the state and the city's done for municipalities.
Pointage.
Yeah, that's, that's just, uh, that's, that's really a big thing for us, for other cities.
And, and I think people will see that, they'll, they'll see our spending that money.
Mayor, you?
All right, thank you.
Um, I'm, I'd like-
Any other discussion?
Somebody else want to make a motion? I move that we advertise, um, for the public hearing, for the budget, with a one-mill increase to be adjusted as appropriate, based on public hearings and future discussions.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second from Alderman Beadie. All right, let's do this wild old call, though, shall we? I'm not sure that a aye or nay will help. So if you would answer aye or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter?
Yay.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yay.
Alderman Rupp?
There.
Alderman Rupp?
Hey.
Alderman Beadie?
Yay.
Vice Mayor, break in?
Yay.
Alderman Rupp?
Yay.
All right, thank you.
I was going to say, it, it's tough to have, and I would almost like to task the fire and the police individually to come up with some kind of, just a very simple chart on pay in local communities, like maybe a-
I think Mr. Ashford has probably got that.
Something, I mean, and that, sometimes I think we compare to, like, obviously, South Haven, I hear a lot about South Haven and Oxford, but Oxford's fine, but I would like to see also, like, Columbus and West Point. Uh, it doesn't have to be between a town of twenty and thirty thousand, I want to see the, the smaller and the bigger, um, because oftentimes, you know, the luxuries, we hear, we hear a lot, but I want to just, you know, give me eight or nine, ten cities, or Nav, give us eight or nine, ten cities, and, um, don't just do twenty to twenty-five thousand. I would like to see a sixty thousand. I think we may be comparable to even some bigger cities. Are, are, are we really off target, or are we, do we hear more than is really true, I guess, so? That's all I ask. I do want to see that, uh, between now and the next meeting or something.
Alderman Sistrum?
Um, do you mind, Mr. Ashford, telling us which cities you and the Stennis Institute and Mr. Hunley pulled for the, the study that y'all did? Um, because I think they were the kind of cities that you're talking about.
We did, so Matt had already, from the Stennis Institute, had did a survey, uh, for first responders only, and so a lot of those cities are some that you had mentioned, and so I have that data from the booklet that he has, and so a lot of other cities that we chose that were comparable, like South Haven, Biloxi, Columbus, Mississippi State, um, we looked at a couple of positions within the county, uh, because they were next door. Um, we have West Point, and some of those positions was outliers, so we didn't necessarily use that data. Columbus, Mississippi, Tupelo, um, we have Oxford, um, we have a couple of, of the locations up by, like, South Haven, Batesville area, but there's a whole list of data that we was able to pull from in order to get a comparable data.
If you're going to say off the top of your head, no right or wrong answer, but if it's based on exit surveys, would be the top three, three cities people would leave here for salary reasons, where, where would it normally lose somebody to?
It was Tuscaloosa, it was Oxford, and it was Tupelo.
Top three. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And you have that, you can send that to the board, right?
I can.
Okay, if you would, please disseminate to that, that to board tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, anything else, Alderman? Okay, all right, moving on to the next item, we have a claim stockin'. Move approval. Motion from Alderman Sistrum, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carter. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, thank you. And that takes us to the, um, we need a, a closed determination session. Do I have a motion going to a, uh, what? Thank you, Alderman Rupp.
Second.
Alderman Carter? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed? All right, we will be going into a closed determination session to determine the need for an executive session. If everyone will please clear the room. the need for an executive session. If everyone will please clear the room.
No action in executive session. Language calling for the work session and according to the notice required in Mississippi Code and annotated 254113, we will be having a work session on the 29th of July at 11:00 AM. The meeting will be held at City Hall in the second floor conference room at 110 West Main. Public and media are invited to attend. Notice should be provided this work session with one hour of this meeting by post-exception notice at City Hall. The notice should be made as part of the minutes of the board meeting. The work session will be an open public meeting. You will both public professors are invited to attend. And we will have another budget discussion at that point in time so that will be part of our discussion. If everyone can take your homework and study it. We will come back and have a discussion at that work session. I need a motion now to adjourn. I have heard all the volume on the second.
Good job.
Second, to adjourn, was that you?
I said so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I seconded my own vote.
That's wrong. Almost as bad as I'm saying I. All right, we're in adjournment. Thank you everyone.